Good evening and welcome to the Collinsville Board of Education Work Session for September 22nd, 2025. Would you please rise and join me in pledging.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. It's good to have everyone here tonight. Do we have goal call?
Yes, we do.
Okay. So being a work session, I'll turn over to Dr. DeBarry so we can begin some presentations.
All right. Thank you. So as the board knows, based on the previous communications, you have seen our success planning guides, completion of the success planning guides for the 24-25 school year. So what we're going to first have the principals quickly do, one to two minutes, because the goal is to try to get to the 25-26 action plans and allow for the board to ask a variety of questions as we work through the plans for this school year and what we hope to do to improve academic performance or continue to improve academic performance. Before Mike begins with a quick update from REG, I do want to point out, based on conversations from our retreat, we did get the new sign placed here and as the board knows, all of the success planning guides and the action plans for our secondary and elementary schools align to our district's strategic plan, also aligned with our mission and vision. So hopefully you'll see the connection between all of those documents as they engage in conversation this evening. But again, the goal is a quick recap of 24-25, knowing that we're still doing work in all three buildings tied to project-based learning. And then we'll talk more about the goals for this school year. So with that, are there questions from the board? And Mike?
Excellent, Joe. Thank you very much and good evening, Board of Education. I first want to start here. It's a well-known fact that all successful buildings in our district and leadership teams rely on the support and leadership of everybody on that team. And Ray Middle School is no different. So I just want to quickly reference Mr. Bill Allen and Victoria Seivers, two assistant principals that continue to do great work here at Ray Middle School with our teachers and our kids. Real quickly, two goals last year I think are worth referencing that Ray Middle School is excited about. Last year, prior to creating individualized and differentiated education, a goal that we had was really getting off the ground our win literacy program with our sixth grade pilot team. We had some great success last year, so much so that we've grown that pilot team to two sixth grade groups. We can talk about the metrics later, but that's something we're excited about and continue. We anticipate the continued growth by another year or two, all of our sixth grade teams will be operating in that model. So that's one area we were excited about from last year. And also in that primary area of project-based learning, the goal was by the end of the school year, all Ray students will experience a PBL unit of study, either in technology or in social studies class. That did happen. And we'll talk later about the expansion of PBL units in different classrooms. So students are getting multiple times that PBL experience throughout their time at Ray Middle School.
Good afternoon. Two items that we're pretty proud of as kind of heavy lifts from last year that have legs and are really kind of continuing this year. And Goldie talked about social development and we kind of worked to create a cell phone implementing guidelines that we were able to implement across the board in the school that we kind of built off of Ray's successes earlier on and brought into that junior high forum last year. We're happy to see that this year we continue to see less kids on phones, more time on task in the classroom, and better conversations between adults, parents included, and our staff members about the importance of this. So that's really kind of helped us along, got more time on task in the classroom, and really kind of made our connections with our community be a lot stronger. The second one is going to be, last year we decided we were going to start a data team. So the goal was establish building data team, task organizing data workflow for individual departments. We're going to talk a little bit more about this in this year's plan, but those kind of foundational moves we made last year to really start talking about this on a high level with our building leadership have really taken us into what will now be the 25-26 goals. And we're proud of where that started and where that's going and talk about that later.
Good evening. So a couple of things to highlight from Baker is that for our creating individualized and differentiated education, we have been able to significantly increase the number of co-taught sections, specifically, well, quite a few actually, US History, 11th grade ELA, the 12th grade Critical Reading, Thinking and Writing Class, four sections in Science and some Geometry and Math topics sections. So with some creative scheduling, that is a, it's going to be very significant this year when we look at our region's results and other data. So I think I totaled up maybe eight additional co-taught sections, which is huge. We have also, with the help of Renee, completed a graduation pathway guide that we will be reviewing one more time in October because it is a very dense document to make sure that everything in there is something that we should be releasing to parents and that it's 100% accurate because it's the pathways on how you get to graduation, not a course catalog, but you know, pick a pathway and let's get you there. With the help of Jen Medwick, we have been working to continue to phase in PBL. She has created an organizational tool to monitor check-ins, to monitor teacher progress and project completion for students and teachers, making sure that the teachers are on track with their first and second projects and providing them any support that's necessary. And so that's the PBL piece. And then last year, teen mental health first grade, we have been doing a favor for a couple of years, but last year was the first year that we were able to implement it in health class for all 10th graders and then 11th or 12th graders that have decided to delay health. And so that'll continue this year, but health is the right class to teach that content in. And our social worker, Meredith Trulie, pushes into all six sessions in the fall and the spring, and our counselors are there too for both sessions.
Can I just ask, diversified instruction. So I have a long old of what version of that, but what exactly are you doing when you talk about diversified or individualized instruction? Describe it just a little more.
So we're talking about the co-taught classrooms where there's multiple teachers or TAs. They break students up into small groups. They can have different conversations about different topics. There are different levels of homework completion depending on IDPs, different levels of questions on tests if necessary. The goal is always region's prep, but it doesn't have to look the same to get there. And so with the two teachers in the classroom, you can break up into different level groups, which is very, very beneficial.
So you really are truly getting more down to an individual level anyways?
As much as we can. In the classes that we've seen, you know, like English 11, you have to pass the English 11 regions to graduate high school. And so that class, we went from five to six co-taught classes so that we can provide additional support to students with IDPs. And the students in that class too, when you have a co-taught model, it doesn't just benefit the IDP students, it benefits all students.
Okay. Thank you.
I know that was a quick rundown of last year. The board's had a chance to look at it better. Are there any questions related to last year's results before they get into 25-26?
Just, I noticed with the high school plan, a lot of things were left in process last year. And I'm not familiar with the, all the terminology that's in the plans. So did you continue some things from last year to this year? Because like the things that were in process, did they continue to this year?
Yes, nothing has been canceled. However, in my version, well, what I'm looking at has completed steps for 24-25. So let's see.
Oh, maybe we got that.
Working as a support. So mine's just.
Okay, maybe we got an earlier version.
Maybe. I'm just looking real quick.
But it sounds like.
So like the graduation pathway, I had mentioned that Renee helped, but that has been completed. We're going to do one more check, but that has been completed. So continue to work with. So B time is complete.
And I'm looking at this too. We, I believe we uploaded the wrong 24-25 because when you think about what was in the weekly letter, we had little check marks next to if we had made progress to and if we met the measure. So we'll double check that.
Okay, thank you.
And the depth corrected on goal docs. Do you remember that? Because there were like little red check boxes.
Yes, okay. Yep. Okay, got it.
I think for the most part, the only areas where there weren't, where we did not complete the goals as communicated were the areas of project-based learning, which we have shared with the board that that's a ongoing process over the course of, you know, the five-year plan. That's not going to be something that happens to they said we want it to happen over the course of one year. So that's a multi-year goal. So Mike, goal one.
Great. So we can talk now about 25-26. And that goal one, that area of improving student achievement. Our first goal during the year, all sixth and seventh grade core area departments will meet in their respective PLCs to collaborate and employ interdisciplinary literacy strategies. What that really means is how is your classroom teaching reading, right? What is your approach to literacy, not only in the ELA classroom, but a science classroom, a math classroom, across the board interdisciplinary? So we're excited about that approach and our teachers are really on board with that. Also working for on building wide instructional agreements like student reflection, revision protocols, things that make up great instruction while students are receiving. Our second goal during the year, core teachers will embed and incorporate New York State test questions into both formative and summative assessments. Our state sixth and seventh grade math ELA test results were not where we want to be and where we know we can be, not because our students can't do that, but because sometimes on those state assessments, the language used to pose a question might be a little bit different, more or less rigorous than what they're used to in that classroom setting. And so that's a goal of ours is to continue with our classroom practices, but embed some of those specific, whether it's a verb or a descriptor in those questions. So our kids are familiar with that coming for New York State tests. Third, design and implement a study hall procedure which encourages organizational skills, daily academic planning, and productive educational technology use. As a one-to-one district, putting a Chromebook into every 11-year-old's hands is great, but there is some unstructured time during school day. And too many times for this year, what that turned into was a game first, a social piece first, before homework. And so with the help of our building leadership team, we created a protocol that is up during all study halls and the first 10 minutes is a no-tech time. After that, there's a smart tech time, right? And so really a protocol of what students are expected to do. And if you walk by our cafeteria with 40 kids in a study hall, you can see a huge difference this year versus last year, those first 10 to 20 minutes in the classroom. And lastly, in progress here, on November 5th, the REG will hold a community cafe for families focused on study skills, organization, and academic habits for success. This year, we plan on using the thought exchange also, but not during the actual evening itself. We'd like to put that exchange out a couple of weeks ahead of time. We hear from families. What do you want to know? What would be helpful for you? Because we're envisioning very much a session rotation-like evening where families can go and get information related to those topics as they move around. So we feel good about our short-term goals in area, goal number one, primary area. Our second area, goal number two, provide project-based learning experiences.
Mike, oh wait, we'll have everyone do goal number one.
Thank you, Joe.
I just have to say, you know, we just did the community cafe on parent involvement. And to do something where we can help the parents with the school structure without, how to help their student, I think is wonderful. That's great.
So for improving student achievement here, the first area we kind of looked at was literacy. This focus we're kind of taking over as a secondary team here. And our goal first here is during the 25-26 school year, increase reading participation through reading incentives programming, including valid books at Bean Stack. When we asked ourselves, how do we get more kids reading independently? We kind of took a look at our, you know, circulation metrics, how many books are we actually taking out? And we think there's room to grow. And so we have two options here. One is more kind of suited towards our book words, we will, kind of like a spelling bee competition for our kids who already love to read. The second one is a program in which we get to kind of set building and individual goals and kind of track as we go and bring kids on board and say, this is how much we're doing together. It offers a platform for kids to talk about books. There's kind of embedded, you know, AI direction into how we're, you know, keeping accountability for what we're actually reading. So that's goal one. Goal two is we're going to embed DIRI data protocols into PLC time monthly, drive instructional decisions for content area teams. So we talked a little about how we started that last year. And what stemmed from all that was a standardized protocol that every single content area can use. And this year we worked to make sure that we set the time aside for our content area teams to take a look at the data we have and kind of move forward on a consistent basis to look back at our practice to say, what can we do differently moving forward in real time? This is something we've been partnering with the high school with. It's been a real great help to have their expertise on it. You know, we have our commission intern, Aaron Robertson, who really helped us build this out. And John talked a little more about where that's going for the rest of the year. But that's where this thing kind of got started. We're going to see kind of having legs this year and we're excited to see where it goes for DIRI. Finally, last goal here, create a system of success planning team focused on best practice and universal strategies that all our staff can implement in planning and preparing students for NY State exams. You know, at the end of last year, in the springtime, our region's exams, our state exams for eighth grade were difficult. And there was kind of this idea that, oh man, the target keeps changing. What can we do to make sure that we're being proactive? So we're taking our building, or our content area leaders, folks that our younger teachers look up to, and building out best practices for all content areas of this is how, you know, you can access a bank of questions to prepare with. These are the reading lists we should be preparing our kids with up till our exams. And even what are the three weeks before exams need to look like for our kids to be best prepared? So answering those questions, sending them out for all of our teachers, either long-term, long-time ones or new folks to really get on board with so we can have across the board, all our teachers on the same page for exams.
So just, what was it Alex Jewing did when he was trying to get the kids reading? Oh, he was going to take method targeted reading. He spent a night on the school roof. Yes, that was about that.
That was certainly brought up, but we'll see.
I bet it was. I bet it was.
Real quick question. Was it Bean Stack? That looked like, I was just looking through that. It looks like a bunch of fun. Like, how do the kids enjoy the gamification of reading and that type of thing? Or how is it utilized in the classroom?
The rollout is starting very soon with our English classes. But we kind of pre-ran it and saw how things go. It goes back, I'm a 90s kid, so I don't remember Book It.
Yeah.
Book It was, it's like the digital better version of that in that, hey, we're going to spend 15 minutes in our B times reading. B time is a 30-minute block where we get an instructional report for all our kids. But there is some unstructured time and this is a way it's like, hey, let's pick up that book you got from the library. Let's log our 15 minutes. And then we can actually kind of create that culture of reading because we're all on. So how did you like that book? Should I be reading this book next? And so I'm excited to see that how this works when we're kind of meeting kids where they are with how they interact with each other and content instead of just having, you know, sit-down discussion groups like, what did you think? Like, this is a different way of doing it that kind of meets them where they are. And I think that's going to have, you know, some good, some good things we can add on this year.
It looks fun. I hope so.
For Baker, for improving student achievement, we have a lot going on this year. So it is very exciting, but we are also modeling B time for the first time. This was a work of labor and it is finally here. In the past five days, we started with B time last Monday after putting expectations in place. We've had over 150 passes in just five days from students going to get help in social studies, English, tech, art. It's the number of passes, it far exceeds what we were expecting. And that's with, it's excluding MATLAB. So we left MATLAB intact. So MATLAB is still available nine periods a day. It is not a part of our B time. And we've had over 200 passes to MATLAB in addition to the over 150 for our B time. So students are absolutely taking care, taking advantage of the support that we put in place. Ours is 28 minutes, but by the time students transition to their B time, probably 25 to 24 minutes of support time before first period. The other in-progress piece we have is our expanded co-teaching. I just tallied it up real quick. It is actually 10 new sections of co-taught, not six. Something new we're doing this year to improve student achievement and really student access more than student achievement. We are taking 240 12th graders this fall. Our students that are taking OCC English classes this fall are going on a field trip to OCC. They're going to tour the campus and have some different sessions in the library in different classrooms to see what it feels like to be on a college campus. But it's all the students that are in the 12th grade English OCC classes. So I think today's total was 240. And that's really just a great opportunity. Counseling will take another group of students in the spring that have applied or are thinking about applying. But this is some of our 12th grade students' first visit to college, first college visit. And that's happening just in two weeks from now. Let's see. So I'm going to talk about OCC again. We are, with the help of Maggie Esslebuth and our new assistant principal, we are going to start offering ELM course credit, which is the course credit attached to the Micron micro credential. We are offering 12 out of the 16 credits that can be offered at the high school micro credentialing. Students can then go to OCC for a year or two years and carry on with their studies to end up with either a micro credential, an AA, and then an employment opportunity at Micron. We have started this fall, actually offered those classes. They lay on top of some of our technology and project lead weight and computer science classes, but those teachers will need to enhance their content and make sure that they are teaching what the OCC ELM courses require. So that is another way of improving student achievement. And then the biggest way is in collaboration with DIRI. And so John gave a little bit of an update on the DIRI data plan, but I'm going to talk about our 10-month high school data department review plan that I think is attached to the strategic plan. It was put in there last week, I think. And so in combination with DIRI, we are going to spend the entire year at our faculty meetings, at our PDC day meetings and department meetings, and John said his PLC meetings discussing data. So we are going to start tomorrow with Aaron leading the charge. And we are going to do a notice and wonder protocol to review the high-level state report. So we're talking AP data, project lead weight, end-of-course data, region's data, Apple data, the eighth grade state assessment data, anything that we could pull that is showing student achievement. And teachers are going to work together in groups to identify some things that need to improve. In November, they're going to do a root cause analysis and figure out why the students aren't achieving as high as they should. From there, we will talk about what student success looks like. December, Gabby, our learning coach, is going to come in and she's going to share some instructional strategies that teachers can put into their toolbox and will be asked to use in order to increase student achievement. January, our teachers are going to be working as a department to analyze student work samples and actually look at student responses to test questions, to essay questions, and figure out what the areas of concerns are and what common misconceptions are. And then in February, they are going to do a small-scale instructional strategy workshop and check on progress of how Gabby's instructional strategies are rolling out. From there, in March, at our PDC day, our goal, Baker and DIRI's goal, is to have our, to bring our departments together to share out on their instructional strategies and what their improvements look like to date. And then we'll continue with that in April and May. And then in June, finally set some goals for next year in terms of data review. So I do think it's connected. It's a long, I mean, it's a multi-page data plan. So please take, you know, time to look at it and review it and ask any questions. But it is our way to start having very important conversations about moving the needle forward and increasing student achievement. You've all seen our region's results. They're very good. Our students do a great job, but they're, it can always be better. And our rate of mastery can always achieve, improve, and that's what we're going to work on.
I wanted to talk for a minute about the co-teaching. You know, we're responsible for the budget and co-teaching requires special ed teachers. So can you talk to us a little bit about the types of classes where co-teaching is being used? Is it all levels of classes so that students with learning differences can participate at whatever level? Or is it the basic foundational classes?
It's, it's both. So the region's, so 10th and 11th grade history and English have historically had co-teachers. This year in 11th grade, we expanded the number of co-teaching sections in history and English from five to six. But that wasn't the big change. Historically, 12th grade English, so our 10th and 11th grade students that are in co-taught English have been going to a 12th grade English class without a co-taught teacher, without a special ed teacher. And so they haven't, they haven't had that support. It hasn't affected graduation rates, but it has affected achievement, right? And so this year, three of our, three out of the four 12th grade non-OCC classes, English classes, have a co-teacher, which in, to me, is just a huge win. It's something that I have wanted to do ever since I started here and it was just a very difficult thing to do. It came about because last year we hired two special ed teachers instead of a social studies teacher when we were going through that hiring process because Joe had that brainstorm and it was amazing. The other classes this year, so Algebra I sometimes does, sometimes doesn't have a co-teacher. It depends on needs. This year Geometry has a co-teacher. And we have to give Geometry a co-teacher because as the IDPs come up from DIRI, it said, "Co-taught math for geometry." And it was a non-negotiable, so those have to happen. The other classes that are very important to have co-teachers and were able to do it this year, we weren't last year, the year before we had one section, are MST and Forensics. These are our third credit science courses that students, some students love science and take forensics and MST. And the other students are just hoping to get their third science credit so that they can graduate. And so there are an enormous number of IDPs in these classes, even more so clumped together than in our English and history classes. And so this year, another huge win was for our MST teacher, three sections of MST to have co-taught. And so sometimes those IDP numbers in those classrooms are upwards of 15, 16 in a class of 25, 26. So to me, it's a necessity.
So I think one of the other pieces that hasn't been available to students in the past is in PEGECOLIP, if that's correct.
Yes, correct.
Which has traditionally been what one might consider a more advanced class for students at the 12th grade level for participation in government economics as well as literature. We actually have some co-taught, or at least one co-taught section of that this year. So students are getting access to something that they didn't have before, which I think is a highlight of some of the shifts that have been made.
That's terrific. This is fantastic.
I have one question too, however that is. So I know we track a ton of data, absolutely love it. Is that something that we can compare those specific core subjects to with student achievement on where the achievement was prior to and then the sections we added to co-teaching to? Because I, I find it would be interesting, because as you said, that co-teaching model is a lot for those with IEPs, but helps all students of all types, whether, and whether, whatever they needs or their needs are. And I'm interested to see if we're able to compare a non-co-taught to a co-taught, or just even generally last year's English or whatever courses now have it, just to see if we do find the data shows more or less we're the same achievement.
I was just gonna, I don't know, I'm sorry, Danielle's shaking her head.
Danielle's got the.
Ultimately, with the new structures that we had in place with some of the upgrades that had dashboarded that Danielle is implementing this year, we will be able to have more comparisons so that we can, you know, put our, our, you know, projections to the task and improve the fact that we are getting better results with students are more heterogeneously grouped and have supports in place, no matter what course they're in.
I feel like we will see an improvement, like just in my mind, I feel like that model is going to be successful for everyone. And I'm just interested to see if the data will support that at the end of the year. So maybe whether it's the end of this year, beginning of next year, something for Danielle.
So our English exam's changing. So we increased a co-taught section in our eleventh grade class, but the test is different. And so that you can compare, but it just won't be apples to apples. The other piece too is when we talk about co-taught for students with IEPs, not all students need to pass the test to graduate. And so it's not always comparing regions pass rates. It's comparing how students with IEPs did the year before to students with IEPs this year in those co-taught classes that have smaller numbers. So there are multiple different ways to think about it, it's not just regions pass rate.
Yeah, I think seeing all of those facets, if it's not too much for Danielle, the.
There's a lot of ways to do it. You know, like if you're doing it at that quick glance, is kind of what I've been thinking of course scores. We update the interactive report card every quarter. So if we're looking at last year's course scores in English eleven to this year's course scores in English eleven, like what does that tell us? Does it tell us what we're hypothesizing it does, or how can we dig deeper into that? We can get some quick glances to, for sure.
Excellent, love it, thank you.
All right, we'll transition to goal two, provide project-based learning experiences. A goal from last year that's clearly carrying over. At Ray during the school year, our, and our, and our department PLCs will collaborate and explore ways to incorporate the gold standard PBL framework into units of study. We know that gold standard, what those outline, are just great teaching practices that engage students, that are relevant. There's voice and choice all the way through. Our teachers have done a great job, we have eleven fully-trained PBL staff in our building. But during PLCs, we've got other teachers that are very curious about wanting to know more. So tell me about that unit, how can I do that in my classroom? Tomorrow during our PDC day, we are offering a session that initially was just for PBL-trained staff. But through the, our Google form that went out, many of our staff members who hadn't had an opportunity to be trained yet, they requested the ability to go to that training, that one-hour session with Gabby Saez. So we're excited about the interest and enthusiasm in our colleagues sharing, staff sharing with our colleagues during that planning time. Also throughout the school year, our second bullet, Ray students will experience PBL units of study in the following areas. Last year it was Technology Six and Social Studies Seven. We've added other units, ELA in sixth and seventh grade, and also physical education. Ms. Holmes did a great job. You know, I really like her, her central question, you know, what makes physical education engaging and meaningful? And what makes a game worth playing also? That was a great driving question for her unit of study with her kids too. So it just shows, it shows across the board in all of our classrooms, our teachers, in all of our spaces, they're interested in PBL and giving kids great experiences. And lastly, our last bullet, by the end of the school year, PBL 101 trained staff in both cohorts will formally meet and reflect and evaluate implementation of projects and explore project design revisions. Last year we had a similar bullet, and we strategically brought teachers in from different content areas to share how it went. And it was very unique and interesting seeing a science person talk about a rollout and a Yelp to an ELA person and the commonalities, you know, and kind of stealing best practices from each other too. So I anticipate that happening again at the end of the school year as interest and expertise grows.
Mikey, just give an example, I could put skin on that, what is that?
Which part, the like, what, PBL unit of study?
Yeah, the difference, when someone implements it is.
Well, can we pull up the design wheel? It's that highlighted right there too. And you'll see in this.
Joe, what's your password?
Yeah, right.
I'm not logged in. Take the members. One, two, three, four, five.
Thank you. So if we scroll down and look at the, right there. So looking at this, this gold standard, whether sustained inquiry, authenticity, voice and choice, reflection, critique and revision, public product, challenging problem or question. Many of those elements exist already in good teaching in teachers' classrooms, right? But the combination of those giving students a jumping off point with a challenging, relevant problem, problem or question that they're interested in clearly changes engagement, right? When you add in there specifically voice and choice here, what angle they want to approach or attack, that challenging problem, it helps. Authenticity is connected too. So again, you can, we talk about the dimmer switch approach also, and we encourage our teachers that are trained or not to, sometimes in a unit, that dimmer switch will be all the way up, right? And all of those elements are working specifically in that three-to-four week unit. Sometimes maybe it's, it's halfway there where you're not maybe focusing on public product here, but it's still something worthy of study, it's authentic, and there's a, a big reflection component there too. So I know it's still kind of broad also, but I think that visual gives a good idea about when all of those are interacting together, what it provides for students.
I was gonna say a couple of things. We had a few years ago, a sample PBL class taught to us. That might be a good thing to do again with, you know, for some of the new members could really see what, you know, PBL is. It was great.
Difference between teaching them.
Yeah, yes, they did it like a traditional class.
Yeah.
And then they did a PBL class for us, and it was, it was amazing. It was really an amazing experience. And Mike, I just had a couple of questions. It seems like the new portrait of a graduate and PBL are inextricably linked. So you've got cohort one and cohort two that have been through the PBL training. Is your goal to make sure every teacher has PBL incorporated? And how much more will you have left after you get through cohort one and two?
That, Kristy, you're right, that is the goal of the district, is to get all staff members trained also. Right now, out of eighty instructional staff at Ray, we've got eleven fully trained. And I would say there's, there's twice that that are interested right now that are very much, these elements are alive and well in the classroom, they just haven't had the formalized training to be able to put that together, and the support that comes behind that with our learning coaches and with district staff also. So that's the first piece. And what's our long-term goal is really if we can get every student experiencing one or two PBL units of study in every content area, you know, by the time they leave Ray Middle School, they'll have fifteen or sixteen authentic rigorous PBL units of study. I think, you know, working with Renee and the rest of the district leadership team, that's really our goal too.
And I'll add in Kristy too, that the training is three days. So what we, what we did last year and this year is operate in the summertime. So sometimes that's good for people and sometimes it's not good for people. So I think you have all the, the people who are like, yep, pick me, pick me, I want to do this, right? And now we'll, we'll have to methodically target and maybe think a little bit differently about how we offer the trainings because, you know, people can come in the summertime, they don't have to come in the summertime. So that'll be something that we'll be talking about.
So when we think about the superintendent's conference days too, and there will be offerings related to project-based learning and helping those that maybe aren't trained start that process. And so when we think of the other three superintendents' conference days that will be happening in October, November, and March, there will be those offerings. The, the one that happens to be tomorrow is more focused on building level discussions. But even with that, I'm sure there'll be conversations related to project-based learning and some of the other district goals because that's just what they do when they work with their staff.
So kind of under the umbrella of the overall goal to get every one of our staff members trained and implementing these PBL units, this year we look to how we can kind of set up processes to teach best practices as new folks come up into discipline. So the first thing we're gonna be doing is we're gonna grant our PBL leaders, those folks who've gone through the process before, collaboration time with our kind of PBL learners, the folks who were in Mexico at work this time, using time set aside during B time to collaborate and talk about best practices so that any of the kind of, you know, mistakes or shortfalls we had last year, we get to move forward from those quickly and efficiently for the second round. The second thing we're gonna do is hold quarterly focus groups from our students from past PBL units, those eighth graders who went through it, who are ninth graders now, who can kind of talk, speak to the things that really work for them and the differences, kind of like we talked about, the difference between the units and other ones. What they saw was different and what we can kind of, you know, expand on moving forward as we create more of these. Because our, our teachers are created from scratch, right, in a lot of ways. And so to have more knowledge, especially from the students themselves, is going to be helpful and create some, successful off-the-blocks.
At Baker, we have eighteen staff trained in PBL 101, and this summer four staff went to the PBL 201 conference. In addition to that, this year we are going to collaborate with learning coaches during PDC conference days to provide those twenty-two staff members with additional support that they need. We will have Jen continue to do monitor and check-ins with the teachers' progress for both their first and second cohort projects. If you're a second year or if you've been trained in 201, the expectation is that you do at least two PBL, PBL projects in your class this year. For PBL 101, it's one PBL project. So Jen's going to help make sure that they are on track, that they have the supplies they need, that they have the learning coach support that they need so that they can lead their projects. And during depart, not department meetings, faculty meetings, we're going to use information from PBL works to have conversations about what PBL looks like in the hopes of getting other teachers excited about going to the training in the summer. So like ten-minute mini professional development pieces on why you should do this and what it looks like, and, you know, just some basic information folk have, how to do minor implementations, just to spark some interest.
One of the pieces that Renee has done already too, just to prepare staff. We are limited, targeted old people during the school year because of the need for subs and you're taking away from instructional time and class time with, with students. But knowing, you know, getting information out there as soon as we can with offerings during the summer. We have already communicated, Renee did that, I think even before the start of school, what our summer dates were for summer of 2026. So as people are making plans, they know the first two weeks in July basically are going to be dedicated to curriculum development and professional development, so they can work around that with their accommodations and other things that they, they would choose to do. Hopefully we'll see some greater attendance during the summer work sessions.
So our third goal this year, goal number three, increasing school safety and security. And we know there are many levels, right, to, to what that means. At Ray, our first bullet, the sixth and seventh grade students will combine during our SEL advisory sessions triangle, cultivating a sense of belonging and shared community. So every month on a Wednesday, we have a, an elongated homeroom, a forty-minute homeroom that focuses on a specific SEL lesson. Over the years, we started combining, mixing sixth and seventh graders together once, then went to twice. And now our, our leadership team is requesting we do it three times for some important reasons. The number one reason I see a value as the opportunity for leadership, right? For our sixth graders to learn from seventh graders. And in turn, in our Ray day in May, when all the fifth graders come up, we put those sixth graders in that same position as leaders for those fifth graders with the Q and A, right? What's it like coming to Ray Middle School, all those things the kids want to know also. So again, we'll be looking to do that three times this year. Out of our ten Wednesday sessions, three of them will be mixed strategically, sixth and seventh graders. The seventh graders love coming back to their sixth grade teachers also too and saying, hey, remember me? So those are fun, fun days. Our second bullet and goal, each week a homeroom, homeroom will conduct a live morning announcement based on the district-wide positivity project character strength of that week. Additionally, students will nominate their peers who embody that character strength throughout the week. This is a shift, last year and the years previous, we had taken teacher nominations for students who had showcased that, that PT strength. This week it's teamwork, right? And we would display those, we would get group pictures also at the end of the week too. We wanted to change that up and give kids an opportunity to really own that in a fun and unique way by creating a, you know, a, a gold, silver, bronze level of performance. And so, you know, the very basic could be what's teamwork about? And they do a forty-five second, you know, with a Chromebook, live straight, students explaining what teamwork is. And then it can level up to silver or gold where they're maybe doing a skit about teamwork also and incorporating some neat things that gives the assistant principal team, we're gonna be behind the camera, some fun things to do with kids and give kids an opportunity to really own that and nominate their peers too. Lastly, our third goal, under school safety and security, create a peer tutor program that promotes positive student-to-student interactions through academic skill support while promoting student leadership. This is really inspired by Baker High School and their genius at Baker, putting students in a position to help other students with knowledge, whether it's technology. Ours will be similar. We're, we're looking to get this off the ground very soon, calling it the Ray Student Connection, but being very similar, taking place in the library, a place where students can go on a study hall period during ECL and another opportunity to give students a leadership opportunity to share with other students what they know. So we're excited to see how that works, very similar to how it's the success of Baker's end with this.
So working with thirteen and fourteen-year-olds in a junior high school, talking about safety has a lot to do with, I'll get mental health. And so a lot of our focus is on how we support that in our student body and with our staff. So our first bullet here is to continue to create a trauma-sensitive school environment through therapeutic crisis intervention schools, our TCS training program. We've had a lot of success bringing people on board kind of voluntarily over the last two years. And I think the feedback from the staff members who have gone through this program will really start to understand how to escalate students, how to talk to students who are in crisis. Makes our classrooms not only safety for real, but also feel safer. You know, we have a student who's yelling in the classroom and knowing what to do in that moment, calm them down, bring them somewhere else. We all get back to learning, we all get back to feeling safer. So that program has been paying a lot of dividends for us, and we're gonna keep on pushing to increase that until every one of our staff members in DIRI is training. We're gonna utilize our bully pulpit DIRI news to create monthly educational bulletins talking about SEL, safety topics like bullying, online safety and security, and of course, mental health support and resources where you can find this. So giving kids information they need from their peers and from their trusted adults through our DIRI news system is going to be another goal we have to make sure that happens on a monthly basis. We're gonna invite speakers this year, tomorrow, in fact, we have Dr. Kevin Anshel coming in to talk to our whole student body, or our whole DIRI staff as well as Baker, to talk to us about mental health and how we can support students in that. So having those outside voices, those professionals who really understand it at a really high level, teach us and so we can be the learners as well in that scenario. And finally, we're gonna continue to kind of follow the example of the high school with our teen mental health first aid, which we've kind of come along with over the past couple of years and sort of built a system out for how we support kids for these difficult conversations we have in this classroom and, and learn from them as we, as we bring more support systems. And our social worker now participates, we have a guidance counselor, and we have some of these hard topics around like suicide or what to do in these hard situations for kids. So that's been really productive in building conversations with our students as well.
I'm gonna touch on a couple of things John said. So tomorrow when Dr. Anshel comes, he's also going to talk about ADHD and autism, a little mini segment on that. Hopefully it goes really well, Dr. Anshel has a lot to offer, and we're gonna collaborate with him to see what other times he has available to come back and speak to the staff on the mental health of our students. For the teen mental health first aid, which John also talked about, we're gonna continue that in health classes this year, but Jen Sawyer, our SEL learning coach, is also going to be involved and be helping with that along with Meredith Truly, our social worker and our counselors. And so hopefully Jen brings some new perspective to the course. We have found that the teen mental health first aid course is so significant and valuable. There have been, I, I don't even want to put a number on it, many instances. There have been, I don't even want to put a number on it, many instances of students that have taken this course that then have said, I learned this in teen mental health first aid, so I'm coming to you because I know I need to say something, and it has made a difference. It is, it is one of the most profound things that I've seen change the way students think about mental health and coming to an adult, like somebody on the administrative team or the counseling team, right away, like not even letting him go. It has made a profound impact. Maggie McGraby, she's going to work with our counseling staff this year to offer SEL groups during B time. And not just counseling staff, it'll promise someone will be involved, and Liberty Resources has also offered to, offered group sessions for their specific group of students. And so we're going to do some SEL groups during B time that'll be started this fall. We don't have a list of topics yet, we're still in the brainstorming phases, but those will start by November and continue during time through June. And then the other thing that's on here that we have been doing that we have seen make a difference in students and our awareness of students is the BIMAS. We do that twice a year in November and April, and it's definitely something that we should continue, continue doing. Along with that comes spread assessment team meetings, which Carrie helps us with, and we have done multiple of those at Baker, and they have provided support for students that they wouldn't otherwise have for them. Those are important county-wide meetings too.
I just want to commend you. We, we have had several discussions, and I think Carrie may just very aware that we need to educate the whole child, we need to take care of people and make people safe, be sure knowing they're in the right place before they can really be ready to be educated. I would like to ask Megan, what do you hear kids say about BIMAS? Is that taken seriously? Although I'm convinced probably by the time you take a couple of these, you understand maybe what you could say honestly and what you could say if you don't want to be honest. But what do you hear kids say about that?
I mean, it's hard. I think that there's a lot of backlash with anything like the BIMAs that you want to put out to all these students. I mean, these are teenagers, you know? But also, I think that after we've taken, like, I feel like I've taken a lot of them by now, so really, I think we all know what's going to be on there, so it doesn't feel like...
Not basic.
Right.
Yeah.
Like, we know what's coming, we know what's going to be asked, and like, I feel like it's come a long way. I feel like it was more, like, difficult to answer at the beginning than it is now.
Meredith and Laura have done a lot of work trying to build comfort with students. They have spent some time with Drew Thomas and some other teachers, teachers have invited them into the classroom. And they do a Q and A with students about the BIMAs and about the importance. And it fits really nice into the psychology classes because it's a piece that's used in counseling. But once teachers found out that Meredith and Laura were going into those classes, there's other teachers that were like, come and talk to my class, let's spread the word about the importance of this. I think we also need to think about the fact that, yes, on BIMAs day, we recognize one data point. However, at Baker, with our building data team, which is, Laura holds our BIMAs data for us, we have created a plan for the students who score high in other areas but maybe have not marked that number that gets evaluated on BIMAs day. And so we talk about those students three times a year, and we decide what interventions they need, whether it's an SEL group, whether it's additional contact time with the counselor, contact time with Meredith or Laura, or Liberty Resources, or even an IST referral to an instructional team meeting. So we're not just looking at the one data point anymore. Starting last year, we started looking at all of them.
Would it be possible to, on the day we do our workshop about the PBL lesson, to maybe add something in there about the team, the team, because I think it'd be interesting, I mean, because the information is useful for everybody. So even if, I was just thinking, if we don't have that connected to a workshop, perhaps we're responsible for figuring out a retreat topic, right, for the spring? So maybe that would be a good way to tackle both for board training and see what our student executive shall remember as well in cabinet.
I, I think that would be amazing, and I, you know, right now, we're living in a time when children are experiencing higher rates of depression and anxiety and social isolation than ever before. And I think, BIMAs or no BIMAs, you know the kids that aren't participating in anything and go through a school day and aren't really so close with anybody, you know? And I don't know what the answer to that is. I don't know if there is an answer, but I think it would be a worthy topic for the board to talk about and wrestle with and see if there's anything we can challenge ourselves to do during these formative years, you know, when students are learning how to build relationships.
See, the data is really interesting because there is a group of students that are not connected to school, but they're not, it doesn't mean they're not connected to the community. Maybe they have a job, or they're a part of Boy Scouts, if they have other interests. But the other interesting piece of the data is the students that are, that are over-connected, or not over-connected, are so connected that their BIMAs scores are higher than you would ever think in terms of anxiety or lack of self-work or lack of self-confidence. So there's, there's, it's not just the students that aren't connected that are the concern, it's the very highly-connected students that are just as big and sometimes a bigger concern.
I would just add to that, what's, what's really nice right now is that we have longitudinal data. So, you know, you've kind of mentioned that when we first, when we first started doing it, it was a shock and it was a big change. But now, you probably started doing this in seventh grade, we have longitudinal data to look at students and, and kind of see, is this a pattern, or is this something they struggled with? Are they connected to services? Have they been in and out of services? What more can we do? Or is this something new in multiple areas, you know, externalizing, internalizing? So it is a way to just, I think, it's a snapshot, but it helps us keep a pulse and then decide to drill down where to go from here.
So thinking about understanding, you know, monitoring data on every single child, I did share with those that were at our agenda planning this past week, Danielle has created this unbelievable data profile system that the administrators have gone through and looked at, and they're making a few with other tweaks. I will share that in a future Friday letter with you, because it does contain privileged and confidential information. But I was hoping, Danielle, you could just briefly describe what you've done, what you've created for the rest of the board before they see this, so they can understand that, I think, the significant impact that's going to have, not only for our, for our staff, but just for us to monitor, track, and support students as we, as we continue to move forward.
Yeah, I'm happy to. Thank you for the kind words. Thanks to our admin team for being so on board since we took a look at this for the first time together last week. What we've created is a district-wide learner profile. And for a long, long time, I mean, this is back a long time ago when I was even in the classroom, we have a lot of different systems that track our data. But the data's housed in each system. So when we're having conversations about students, you're either pulling up all of those different systems and trying to locate the student data, which takes time, it's not efficient, can be frustrating. So what I've decided to move forward in doing is bringing that data together in one place. And so this learner profile allows us to take a look, student by student, at their state test results in ELA, let's say, right next to that. What does their universal screening look like in reading? So now we have two data points right next to each other that we can look at and say, what is my next piece of data to help me understand the student a little bit better, to help me find a focus for what that small group instruction might be, or to progress monitor progress over time? In addition to that, as you watch across, in this spreadsheet, it's easier when you have a visual, we have their math data, so same thing, state assessment scores, universal screening scores in start math, and then we also have their BIMAs SEL scores next to that. So when you're looking at a student, you might see ELA skills might be struggling, math skills might be struggling, BIMAs skills might be struggling. And you can design what those supports might look like. For another student, you might see that their reading skills are struggling, if their math skills are higher, dive into that a little bit more. What is it that's interfering with those reading skills? So it's really meant to be this interactive tool, it's meant to help inform our data teams. We've already had some great ideas as an administrative team of where it can take us and how it can help our school psychologists, our response intervention teachers, our classroom teachers, get to know their students better, find some more specific data points to hone in on, and then ultimately figure out what is that small group instruction, or what is that action that we're taking to help improve student achievement across various areas.
And I think it's just the visual aspect of it makes it, and we're not doing it justice just explaining it, I mean, the fact that you can see, you know, similar to like our data dashboard, the green, the yellow, the red, where students are performing, I mean, you quickly scan down this document, and if it's green, 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 yellow, red, you might start asking some questions, red, yellow, I mean, so if it really makes it easier for whoever is looking at the data to quickly get a glimpse of each of our students, and as Danielle mentioned, there's the ability to extend. So our administrators are thinking about, what are some other data points that ultimately could be added so that we get a given more meaningful, complex, you know, look at each individual student?
And I think too, Chris's point, this, this is really going to be helpful, I think, for us, and I, looking at students that we feel are not connected, maybe, I think, I know in our last, in the workshop we did, we talked about absenteeism and student referrals. So if those are two indicators of students we feel are not connected, now we can take those students at a tier three level and look at this profile and maybe look back, is this something that was always the case, and then moved in and out of the district? Is it new? Those are all things that I think could lead us to developing a plan to meet them where they're at and connect them.
One other piece that I wanted to mention with regard to our action plans that the principals have presented today, we do have the measure documents that the board is seeing. They're available, viewable by the public, you know, to give us a certification of how we're doing with our grid bands, region diplomas in comparison to, you know, the region, the state, all of that information's there. And I think as a whole, as I think they've all mentioned, but it was definitely highlighted by Jen, is this idea that, yeah, we do a great job, right, but we're never satisfied, right? We're always looking to improve and grow. And I think it's important to point out, you know, one celebration that I know we've shared with the board in the past, but we think it's important to share with the public through this discussion is that, you know, we're proud of the fact that we have this well-rounded, well-rounded experiences for students. And, you know, I'm proud of the fact that, you know, when you look at the USA News report ranking that was just put out this past early September, that we're on that list, there are other schools locally that are, you know, higher than us on that list. But how they, you know, the methodology they use determine who gets ranked where, I think it's important to point out that, you know, last year and the year before, we had a ninety-seven percent graduation rate. So it speaks to the well-roundedness of the experience. And yes, a student might not get, you know, that mastery on our, on our region's exam, and we're going to strive to get more of that. But the fact that they're leaving us with credentials is going to help make them successful, whether it's career, whether it's college, whether it's, you name it after this, that's really what it's, what it's about. And, and when you look at those schools that were ahead of us, they didn't have a ninety-seven percent graduation rate. So I think that's something to be proud of. And to know that we have students that are moving into our district because of the special education services and the supports that they have, that we provide to our students, and I think that says a lot too, that we're, we're getting kids where they need to be. We're never going to be satisfied, we're always going to be looking to improve, but we can celebrate also the, the great things that are happening.
So that is the, all the things we helped go through, the points, yeah, okay. Yeah, I, and just to reiterate what Joe said, like we said, we want to allow each individual to thrive, and certainly we appreciate that. Having said that, there's been a lot of discussion on the board about academics and test courses and stuff, so that's, this year is going to be more of a point of discussion a little more, but it sounds like you are well-prepared for that, so thank you. We do, we do appreciate what you do in the planning and the work and care and labor that goes into what you do, because it kind of starts at the top, and you set the example. But we're very, very proud of our staff and proud of our secondary education, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you everyone. The other item we have listed for discussion this evening, and I know we have about five or so minutes before we move into special meetings, were there any areas or related to the proposed bylaws and amendments that the board wanted to discuss as a group? We'll have it on the agenda for the roundtable on October sixth, because we want Sam, Megan is the alternate, to have all of the facts so that they can vote in favor of all of the resolutions that we want the board to support. So if you don't have, you know, specifics right now, that's fine, it gives us one more opportunity on October sixth to really look at what we open it up for any discussion.
I read through what they supported when they did, nothing really jumped out at me except that they were neutral on our proposal, which I think is of no reason not to adopt that, that it can't hurt you, but it could help you. So what's the point? You know? So, but I don't know, there were a lot of neutrals this year, I noticed, and more so than I think there have been in the past. But, so if we've got a minute, you, did you do your session last week?
Yeah.
And how was it?
It was good. I, I had a lot of...
Was it a zoom?
Yeah.
Zoom, okay.
Well, we talked a little bit afterwards, and like, kind of all came together and like tackled what we had seen and what they talked about. And I had a lot of notes, and I thought it was, it was interesting.
Good, good. So this, this had, how many participants? This was New York State School Board sponsored, and you had kids from all over the state, I guess, right?
Yeah, and there are people there in person too.
Oh, where did they hold it? Maybe, oh, maybe...
So there were Cabo Region BOCs just outside of, oh, okay, was the post site where the commissioner was and other dignitaries. And then each of the regions, I chose to do one at their BOC's location. So Megan was at OCN, right? Or did you, did you go virtually or did you actually?
I went virtually.
That's what I thought. But there were a lot of schools that were, you know, zooming in as opposed to taking in person.
Okay, so, so you did get to meet other student reps in?
Yeah.
So, okay, which is nice to have a little bit of a network if you go back and forth.
Yeah, it was nice.
Okay, great.
I'm just actually curious, I haven't had a chance to ask you any questions about it. Did they say whether, like, other schools had some supports like we have in place here with the connection that you have with the high school administrators, and then also Christie being a board member is like a little mentor? Did they describe if they were doing anything like that, other schools?
I think it was a suggestion. I don't know if we're supposed to do it yet, but some of the people I met that were also there with me had like a junior and a senior together, which I thought was interesting.
And we did, we did hear that at the education, leadership and education event, there were some schools that were tackling it, some larger systems where they have students experience it kind of from the side as a junior, and then they, they move into that position as a senior.
Oh, that's cool.
It does, yeah, start early, but it does require, had that to your requirement, which...
A lot of time commitment for the student, obviously.
Right, yeah.
I think with the junior representative, they don't necessarily have to go to as many of the events and stuff like that, and it's just kind of a training process. And then some of the...
And then some of the, every school kind of did it differently. In some cases, the junior would come in towards the end so that the senior could kind of, you know, do all the other stuff they have that they got to get ready for. So yeah, I mean, I guess the options are limitless. We did talk about like moving forward, getting our process going earlier in the spring so that there can be a little bit of a transition period with Megan when she graduates and whoever that current junior is that we know moving into the position next year.
Okay, well, I guess do we want to adjourn our work session and take two minutes, but only two minutes? And then six fifteen, we will do our special board meeting, okay? Okay, so we stand adjourned, work session.